One, welcome to Jenny Dean and the school board meeting. Would everyone please rise for a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Garza, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Chair Sebar.
Here.
Vice Chair Stevens.
Here.
Mrs. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Hollingsworth.
Here.
Mrs. Brooks.
Here.
Mrs. Spah.
Here.
And Mr. Igbal.
Here.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Tanoli. And Mr. Beebe.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Garza. Dr. Newman, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Oh, there is. Add a closed session.
We will be adding a closed session.
Thank you. Now we have superintendent spotlights, Mrs. Radford.
Good evening. Thank you Chair Seberg, to other members of the board. Good evening to you and good evening to our crowd tonight. We are so excited to be on our campus, Jenny Dean Elementary School, and I'm very privileged to stand before you tonight with quite a few spotlights and announcements, but they are some wonderful ones and we are very privileged and honored to be able to celebrate our students and our staff tonight. So if our participants who want to come down to help us tonight would come. Thank you. I'll begin this evening with our MCPS Division Art Show first place winners. The MCPS Division-wide art show was held on April 22 at Osborne High School. Students from every school submitted original artwork to be reviewed by a panel of school and community judges. While there were so many beautiful art presentations, the following students received first place for their school. First, we have from Baldwin Elementary, Donika Smith, 4th grade. You can see her artwork is being displayed on the screen there. From Dean Elementary, Romeo Joya Sorto, 4th grade.
Oh, there's Donika.
From Hayden Elementary, Ian Stanley, 4th grade. From Round Elementary, Dana Moya Aguilera, 1st grade. From Weems Elementary School, Mia Gonzalez Regaldo, 4th grade. From Baldwin Intermediate School, Cassandra Onate, 6th grade. From Mayfield Intermediate School, Jada Pung Sapot, 6th grade. From Metz Middle School, Naomi Lopez Ramos, 8th grade. And from Osborne High School, John Tabug, 12th grade. Congratulations to all of our first place winners and thank you so much for the submission of your beautiful artwork. Congratulations. Thank you. Each spring, at the VSBA Regional Spring Networking Forums and Art Contest is held to showcase art from the region. Each school division submits an elementary, middle, and high school entry. The artwork is judged and artwork that is selected for first place is shared throughout the year with the membership and spotlighted at the annual convention in Williamsburg. MCPS submitted student artwork for each of the three categories and we have three third place winners. I think this is the first time that we've had a winner in every category, so congratulations to our students. First, we will call forth Mackenzie Jackson, 5th grade from Baldwin Intermediate for artwork titled "The Elephant in Red," teacher Katie Buffington. Next, we have Sophia Martinez, 8th grade from Metz, artwork titled "Starry-Eyed" and teacher is Wesley Kane. And next, we have Eden Tabug from Osborne High School, artwork titled "Twist," teacher is Sarah Weaver.
Congratulations, thank you.
Next, we have that our Osborne High School participated in the 2022 Skills USA Virginia State Championship in April. Students represented Osborne very well by walking away with several honors. Ms. Arnaz Dotavala, sponsor for the Osborne Skills USA program, is here tonight and will introduce the students and share more details about the competition. Ms. Dotavala.
Thank you so much for having us. On April 9, our criminal justice team and cosmetology teams participated in the Skills USA competition, the state competition in Virginia Beach, and needless to say, we did very well again. Should I have the students come or... Okay, alright. Cosmetology 1 student Kimora Payne won first place for essay writing. I don't think she's here. Cosmetology 2 student Stephanie Silva Garcia received second place for her fantasy hair. Cosmetology 1 student Marissa Sucheté Paz received third place for fantasy mannequin. I don't think she's here. Cosmetology 1 student Natalie Camargo took fourth place in fantasy. Criminal Justice 1 student Nalan Theodore took second place for spelling. Nalan also represented Osborne High School as the Skills USA Virginia State President the entire year and he made us very proud with his professionalism. Criminal Justice 1 students participated in the crime scene investigation as a team, Stephanie Cruz Garcia, Alexander Ramirez, and Leslie Di Aravallo. They took fourth place. And Criminal Justice 1 student Yvette Mancha participated in the Criminal Justice District Competition. She was trained by Officer Thomas Rodriguez. Unfortunately, Yvette was not able to participate at the state level due to family and personal reasons. Yvette does plan to compete again next year. And all of this, I will say, was thanks to our leaders, Mr. Flugrat, Ms. Betsy Ingels Whitaker, our associate principal and CT administrator. Thanks to her support and she also came with us to the... she was a chaperone at the Skills USA Virginia competitions. We could not have done any of this without her support. Very importantly, I also want to recognize our Manassas City Police, Captain Tara Petty and Officer Thomas Rodriguez, as well as Officer Alisa Dranko. These individuals, thanks to these individuals, they literally spend the entire year coming early, early in the morning at 6:00 a.m. and so on, staying late with our students, training them, sharing their expertise, and showing their support and mentoring them, and from the amounts of our students themselves, they are extremely appreciative of what you did for us, and they also came with us and chaperoned at the Skills USA Virginia competitions. Thank you so much. This was a very, very... it's always wonderful to see Osborne and see Osborne's name up on the large screens and so on. None of us are going to nationals this year, but there's always next year, so we're staying strong. Thank you.
Congratulations, Osborne.
Okay. I need everybody here to know that we love our students who serve as representatives on the school board. Tonight, this is their last meeting with us for this school year and we just want to appreciate them for all that they've done. Ms. Williams has some words to share regarding that.
Thank you, Ms. Radford. Well, both of you have been a pleasure to work with this year, but I'm going to start with Ms. Beebe. You have come during a very challenging time with us, having to separate masks, are we going to go to school, are we not going to school, how to keep the students safe, and to listen to our discussions up here. I appreciate everything you have done for us for the year. Ms. Tanoli, this is it. You're graduating from high school and I want to thank you for your service for two full years during, again, most challenging time we have ever had. Maybe not what we've ever, ever had, but certainly since I can remember for a very long time. I want to congratulate you going on to Georgetown University studying immigration law. I think it's a great time to choose that profession. I think it's going... you're going to serve our immigrants very well and may you encourage others to be as productive and caring and wanting to learn as much as you have. So congratulations.
I'm going to ask for both of them to come forward. We do have certificates for each of them, thanking them for their service during the 2021-22 school year. We also have flowers for both and Ms. Tanoli will also get a graduation cord to wear at the Osborne graduation this year. I would like to say that these students go through an application process. They have to write an essay. They sit through an interview before serving as student representatives to the board and so they always ask such engaging questions and their participation has been just wonderful. So we just want to thank them for their service and congratulations to both of you. Okay. Next, we have our outstanding teacher, our Team Teacher of the Year from Metz Middle School, Jessica Green. Ms. Green uses exceptional instructional practices in her everyday teaching of Metz band, music, technology, and guitar students. Her strengths reside in her passion to teach organizational skills. She goes out of her way to build relationships with her students by meeting with them for extra help outside of regular class time and supports them in their various school activities. As a music educator, Ms. Green uses creative musical approaches to differentiate her instruction, especially with those students who have special needs. Finally, Ms. Green reinforces exceptional instructional performance practice through her collaboration efforts with coworkers through positive goal-oriented programs. Ms. Green serves as an excellent role model as a motivating presence at Metz Middle School. She has an infectious caring and upbeat personality. Evidence of this is seen every time you see her interacting with students in the hallways, classroom, or onstage. In addition, she took advantage of strengthening student relationships she had from her personal classes as well as develop new associations with students she didn't have. As a result, Ms. Green is well-liked and often gets positive greetings from all students. Congratulations to you, Ms. Green. Next, we have our outstanding mentor for the year and that is Heather Hartman from Baldwin Elementary. Ms. Hartman's mentee says, "When I think of my mentor, Ms. Hartman, I realize how being a good mentor requires a lot of commitment and patience. Ms. Hartman is not only good at guiding me as a first-year school counselor, but also excellent at being consistent with it. As educators, being consistent for a whole year is not the easiest thing to do since it requires a tremendous amount of energy to guide and deal with all possible human emotions that come into play. However, Ms. Hartman is always consistent as a mentor and as a school counselor. Ms. Hartman has shown her consistency by being available both physically and mentally throughout the school day. I have asked her at least a million questions as of today and she is always patient and answers to the best of her ability. She engages in active listening and leaves room open for my ideas and any follow-up questions. She has helped me feel more confident as a school counselor through her wisdom coming from her past experiences. Ms. Hartman's feedback is positive and encouraging, which makes me want to do better as a school counselor. Congratulations." Next, we have our MCPS nominee for Washington Post Teacher of the Year, which was Megan Grace. I think her slide is on the screen here. You can see a little bit of information about her. Megan Grace is a science and math teacher from Baldwin Intermediate School. She's been named the Division Winner for the Washington Post Teacher of the Year. The award sponsored by the Washington Post annually recognizes educators around the Washington region that illustrate excellence in their roles as teachers. She and other nominees were recognized at the January Board Meeting. However, she was surprised at her school with the news of her win as the Division Selection last week of April, and she's not here tonight, but we definitely want to shout her out in her absence. So congratulations to Ms. Grace. Each year, the Division nominates a staff member for the Virginia Department of Education-sponsored award, the Mary V. Bukovares Virginia Teacher of the Year. Nominees are individuals who inspire students of all backgrounds and abilities to learn, have the admiration of students, parents, and colleagues, play an active role in fostering community, create a culture of respect and success, and demonstrate leadership and innovation in and outside of the classroom. Tonight, we'd like to recognize our nominees for that award. We will begin with Hayden Elementary School, Amanda Klein, 4th grade teacher. Alright. From Osborne High School, Brandon Fincham, science teacher. Mr. Fincham is the colleague all teachers want to work alongside because he is knowledgeable in content and technology, teaching and technology. He uses this knowledge seamlessly to provide both instruction and opportunity for his students. He's been watched as an emerging natural leader in every situation. Congratulations. From Round Elementary School, Shannon Hilton, Special Education Teacher. From Baldwin Intermediate School, Krista Kellis, 6th grade math and science teacher. Ms. Kellis is a nationally board-certified math teacher. She is able to differentiate her lessons so that learners of all backgrounds are able to succeed. As a co-teacher, she helps to share her ideas and collaborate with others so that all parties are heard. Congratulations to you, Ms. Kellis. And our Mary V. Bukovares VDOE MCPS Teacher of the Year is Danielle Harcup from Weems Elementary School, ESAL teacher. As you can see on the screen, Ms. Harcup was surprised at her school. She is an advocate for Weems Wildcats, a support system for parents, and a teacher of teachers. She doesn't limit her efforts to the classroom. She coordinates parent education workshops called Parents as Educational Partners. She teaches parents to be educational advocates for their children. She began work on the Latino Literacy Project, which is another parent engagement program designed to promote positive literacy practices in the home. Congratulations to you. Thank you. Each of them will receive their plaques at their school, but they're also being given certificates for Ashton Family Diner, a restaurant here in Manassas, so congratulations to you. Okay. I've got notes everywhere. Here we go. Next, we have our MCPS Support Employee of the Year. The Support Employee Excellence Award is given to honor the great work of our support employees, what they do often behind the scenes to support our teaching and learning environment. A plaque will be sent to their worksite and we want to go ahead and call them forward tonight. We have from Baldwin Elementary School, Abdali Daffir, Special Education Instructional Assistant. From Hayden Elementary, Kelly Koch, translator interpreter. Here she comes. She helps collaborate activities, looks for resources, and helps to connect all school stakeholders. She has a passion for translation and advocates for the needs of families to be able to understand in every mode. We congratulate you and thank you for your work. From Round Elementary School, Chana Richet, School Administrative Associate. Ms. Richet is everything to everybody. She is the go-to person to support all staff with questions, challenges, training, and information and insight. She optimizes academic performance by supporting the organizational management of the entire school building. Congratulations, Ms. Richet. From Baldwin Intermediate School, Teresa Bryson, School Administrative Associate. Ms. Bryson applies her wealth of knowledge and information from her years of experience in the Division to address the daily situations that come up throughout the year. She uses and shares with all stakeholders the appropriate procedures and lines of communication necessary to help manage the office and school operations. Congratulations, Ms. Bryson. From Metz Middle School, Kelly Sheldon, School Administrative Associate. Ms. Sheldon wears many hats. She is the most patient staff member and carries her composure well. She always goes above and beyond her role and her school appreciates all that she does. Congratulations, Ms. Sheldon. From Metz Middle School, Manager in Training, Niddy Zil... From Metz Middle School, Manager in Training, Nitti Zilioks. Ms. Zilioks has made a lot of improvements in the kitchen and involved her coworkers to efficiently run the day-to-day operations. She ensures that all foods served were fresh and colorful for the kids and made sure that everyone will get the best quality of meals until the last student of the day. Congratulations to you. Thank you. From Osborne High School, Erica Jones, Administrative Associate. Erica Jones has a can-do attitude, and rather than waiting for someone to ask her to do something, she simply sees that it is a need and does it. She's reliable, professional, and makes herself available to assist in any program in any capacity without hesitation. Congratulations. Next, we have from the Department of Technology, Deb Nash, Application Support Engineer. And from the Department of Transportation, Denise Blankenship, Administrative Associate. Denise Blankenship is proactive in her work. She knows what needs to be done and creatively solves problems, providing assistance in the workload. She has a wonderful working relationship with everyone and encourages others by her example. Congratulations, Ms. Blankenship. So these are all of our nominees, and the person that has been selected as the MCPS Support Employee of the Year does not know that they were selected for that yet. So I'm going to make that announcement right now. Our 2022 MCPS Support Employee Excellence Award winner for this year is Erica Jones from Osborne High School. So yes, she has a banner that will hang up her school for a year to let everybody know that our Support Excellence Award winner works at that location. And so we just want to say thank you so much to all of you for everything that you do, because guess what? We couldn't do the teaching and learning that happens in our schools without you. So thank you so very much. If we can have everybody come over here. Next, we have our MCPS Employee Years of Service. Each school year, we recognize employees for milestones in years of service to the Division. These are done for every five years of service. While employees will be recognized at the school level and given the designated gift relative to their number of years served, tonight, we want to recognize our 10 employees for reaching 30, 35, 40, and 45 years of service. I bet you didn't know. Okay. 30 years of service, Melissa Baker, Instructional Coach from Weems Elementary. 30 years of service, Carol Hart, elective content specialist, Department of Student Achievement. 30 years of service, Lisa Rutledge, Teacher Hayden Elementary School. 30 years of service, Carl Schmidtke, Teacher Osborne High School. Next, we have for 35 years of service, Mary Lane, Teacher Round Elementary School. Another person with 35 years of service is our Head Custodian at Metz Middle School, Dave Preacher. Now, we have two people with 40 years of service, Keith Howell, Teacher Osborne High School. And Dr. Zella Jones, Principal Weems Elementary School. Finally, we have two employees recognized tonight with 45 years of service, Rhonda Brown, Teacher Metz Middle School. And she still has a smile on her face. And from the same school, Metz Middle School, Carolyn Hill, Teacher 45 years. Congratulations to all of you, and thank you so very much for the many years of dedicated service you've given to Manassas City Public Schools. Thank you. All right. And our final spotlights for the evening. Our next presentation is always bittersweet. It's when we salute our retirees. The years of service that each has given to MCPS varies from one year to 40 years, and no matter where they fall on that spectrum, we are truly thankful for the time and dedication they have given to our students and their families. Some of our retirees have already begun their new journey, and others will begin at the end of this school year. But we are very privileged to have many of them with us tonight. As I call your names, please come forward to be recognized. Let's see, with one year, Library and Media Specialist from Osborne High School, Stacy Allison. 30 years from Weems Elementary School, Melissa Baker. 20 years from Dean Elementary School, Jennifer Boaz. 20 years from Osborne High School, School Nurse Mary Burns. Just shy of 36 years from the Central Office, Deborah Carroll. From Round Elementary School, School Office Associate Tina Corbin. 14 years from Food Services at Weems, Rebecca Dawson. 14 years from Osborne High School, Ira DeGroot. 25 years and 11 months from Dean Elementary School, Suzanne Deloria. 16 years from Mayfield, Cafeteria Worker Darlene English. 22 years from Weems Elementary School, Special Education Teacher Stephanie Fisher. 14 years from Transportation, Bus Attendant Zeta Gale. 14 years from Mayfield Food Services, Lisa Geserik. 30 years from the Department of Student Achievement in the areas of Fine and Performing Arts, World Language Library and Media Specialist Carol Hart. From Mayfield Intermediate, 32 years, Bookkeeper Michelle Hutton. 40 years from Weems Elementary School, Principal Zella Jones. 17 years from Mayfield Intermediate School, PE Teacher Ray Massey. 21 years from Baldwin Elementary School, our Project Lead the Way Coach Susan Mayo. From Metz Middle School, 19 years, Custodian Beatrice Najera. With 32 years, Bus Attendant, no, I'm sorry. 32 years from the Department of Student Achievement, Kathy Novak. From Mayfield Intermediate School, 23 years, Catherine Perro. Four years with the Department of Student Services, our supervisor, former Supervisor of Nursing Suzanne Reniger. 19 years from Dean Elementary School, Susan Ridgway. 12 years Metz Middle School, Matilda Rosa Jimenez. Osborne High School, eight years, Catherine Sanders. 36 years Round Elementary School, 2nd grade Teacher Jan Schultz. Dean Elementary School, 27 years, Robin Smith. From Transportation, 17 years, John Southard, also known as Jack. From Hayden Elementary School, 28 years, VPI Teacher Margaret Sparrow. From Round Elementary with 31 years, an Osborne graduate, 1st grade Teacher Anne Marie Stevens. From Dean Elementary School, 27 years, kindergarten teacher, Mary Stuckey. With three years from Osborne High School, Assistant Principal Tim Thomas. 32 years from Metz Middle School, Tammy Warner. And from the Human Resources Department, our Executive Director of Human Resources with eight years, Billy K. Wingfield. So each of them will receive gifts, as you see, and gift certificates to Ashton Family Restaurant. There is no way we can really repay you for all that you've done over the course of your entire educational careers. But we do want to say thank you for what you've done at Manassas City Public Schools. You will be missed. We hope that you enjoy retirement or the next leg of the journey that you plan to take. But thank you all so very much, and please come back to see us sometime. Thank you very much.
We'd like to invite Ms. Billy K. Wingfield to come back up. Billy K., thank you for all you have done for us in leading our HR department. We appreciate you very much. We wish you well on your next journey. And again, we hope you come back and see us, and thank you so much.
Thank you all for your patience, and this concludes our spotlights and announcements for this year. Thank you.
Okay, I'm logged back in now. Next up on our agenda is Board Committee Reports. I don't believe we have any board committees that have met. Thank you. And Citizens Comments. Do we have anyone signed up for Citizens Comments? Would anybody like to speak? Anyone at all? Okay. You have a motion for the Consent Agenda?
Chair, I'd like to make a motion that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the Consent Agenda as amended.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Hollingsworth, seconded by Mrs. Brooks. At the School Board of the City of Manassas, approve the Consent Agenda as amended. Any discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Next up on our discussion agenda, we have the Manassas City Public Schools Education Foundation presenting their annual report.
Come on down.
Maureen is actually walking in, so we're going to give her one second.
Sure.
She has the presentation, I think, so.
She has the presentation, I think, so. So glad everyone's here.
She's coming.
Oh, is it locked?
The doors might be locked.
Is it right here? Thank you.
She's trying to get in.
She's trying to get in, right?
In the back.
She's here. All right, well, thank you for having us today. Can everyone hear me? Good evening, my name is Jimmy Conroy. I'm the president of the Manassas Public Schools Education Foundation. With me tonight is Maureen Arvi, our executive director. Thank you for inviting us here tonight to present the 2020-2021 annual report and update you on what your foundation has been doing this past year. Maureen, you may have to be the technical person. Our newly printed annual reports include data from the last school year. You have an electronic link in your packets. We've also brought you a physical copy as well. We are a volunteer organization along with our executive director. The people named here are the heart and soul of everything we do. This is our current board, which includes seven new members shown in blue, and I'm gonna read them just because I feel like it's important to know who's being represented here from the city of Manassas. Of course, myself from United Bank. Our first vice president is Janay Monroe from Professionals by Design. Our second vice president is Sarah Emerson of Swift, who is here with us tonight. Our treasurer is Chris Peeden from Peeden Accounting. Our secretary is Teresa Carlson from the William E. Carlson Charitable Fund. Obviously, our Manassas superintendent, Dr. Kevin Newman and Craig Gaffeler. Our executive director, Maureen. Andrea Cobb from George Mason University. Kim Golansky from Novant UVA Health Systems. Ian Lovejoy from Reliant Hiring. Alaney Moon from EDIOS Technologies. Samantha Peterson from Lockheed Martin. Natasha Shu-Nafir from Nova Systemic. Patrick Small representing the city of Manassas. Susannah Stern or Steen, excuse me, from Micron. Chris Taylor, our CTE coordinator for Manassas City Public Schools. Karen Todd, our Nova Campus and Community Relations. And then Robin Williams, obviously, our amazing school board member, so thank you. As you can see here, our financials from 2019 to 2021 show significant increases in revenue and program costs over the past two years. Scholarships and teacher grants remain our focus, and last year we included distance learning. This year, we identified college and career readiness as a program area of our need for our student population and our donors. The four main donors, Micron, Lockheed Martin, Swift, and members of the Manassas Interfaith Council donated a whopping $43,570 to support both distance learning and hybrid learning from Wi-Fi hotspots, super great playground equipment from all elementary schools. That's an amazing number. Through donations from United Bank, Micron, William E. Carlson Fund, Swift, Lockheed Martin, and the Walton Jean Katonis Foundation, we funded some exciting innovative educator grants at every level. I'd like to highlight the Lego Club at Osborn, which is for students on the autism spectrum, joined by other interested students who became their buddies. We are reviewing new grants next week, and they look just as innovative as the ones we've already approved. Seven scholarship winners beat out a much larger field because we had twenty students compete for forty-four scholarship applications, and these scholarships are only for Osborne High School students. The Parrish family, Micron, Lockheed Martin, the Mays family, and the Apple Federal Credit Union sponsored these scholarships totaling $12,500. Now I'm gonna turn it over to Maureen Arvi, our executive director, to give you an update for this year, and then I'll be back in a little bit.
Good evening.
Hi.
Hello.
Thank you, Jimmy, and thank you to United Bank for allowing us to borrow Jimmy to lead our foundation. He is such a positive and effective advocate for the foundation and for our students. Tonight, I'm gonna highlight some of the activities we did this school year organized around our four strategic goals that you can see there. We completed our strategic plan last year. Our first goal is to increase awareness of the foundation online. One of the biggest ways that we fulfilled this goal was by designing and launching a new website in November. We shifted the focus to donors as the main audience, and I'll scroll through the homepage content here, which summarizes the main website components. This is at the top of the page, and what's more engaging to draw you in than this happy group of MCPS superstars? As you scroll down, this section describes our programs and what we do, how we invest in innovation and student growth. Next, we talk about impact, which is of prime importance to our donors. They want to know what kind of impact we and their dollars are having on students. Now on to this section that links to ways donors can give money to us, no matter how large or small the potential donor is. The final part of the homepage has logos of our top donors right on the front page for all to see. It's fantastic exposure for them, and the logos link to their corporate websites. So that breaks down our four main sections of our website, and our biggest step forward so far in increasing awareness of who we are and what we do. So how do we know people are actually going to our website? This data from Google Analytics shows that we've had nearly fifteen hundred unique users view three thousand seven hundred and seventy-one pages on the website in the past six months since it was built. That's an average of about two hundred and fifty different people looking at one to two pages on our website every month. Our second strategic goal is to increase donor funding and diversity. As you saw earlier, we're on an upward trajectory for donor funding. And a lot of this is because we've strengthened partnerships with existing donors. For example, longtime supporters, Swift, Lockheed Martin, and UVA Health, more than doubled their annual funding amounts this year. We also diversified by participating in employee choice campaigns and through Give for Education. That was our first direct ask campaign. In our third strategic goal, we really took off this year in the area of scholarships and career and community involvement. With scholarships, we doubled the number of scholarships from seven to fourteen, and from a total of twelve thousand five hundred to twenty-five thousand. We just selected the scholarship winners for this year, but their ceremony is tomorrow night, so we're not sharing their names with you tonight. But what a group. We found a scholarship donor to help the growing number of Osborne grads entering the health and medical fields. UVA Health stepped up to the plate for that. They actually gave us a $12,000 grant that will allow us to provide scholarships for several years. Swift, Sarah Emerson over there. They then responded to the increasing number of seniors who want to study STEM in college. They funded two new scholarships for STEM this year. Finally, one of our most unique scholarships was the Entrepreneur Scholarship, which was founded by Janay Monroe, one of our board members. And that's for students who want to become entrepreneurs but might need some business classes or some training at a hair school. So all of that resulted in forty-five students submitting a hundred and two applications. That's more than double last year's numbers. The second program area that expanded this year was college and career readiness. This was really done through collaboration with Chris Taylor, the MCPS CTE supervisor, and many of our board members and community partners, like Micron, Lockheed Martin, Swift, United Bank, and more. We really salute the CTE program that's been re-energized for helping to make this possible. Our last goal is to increase and diversify the board. We increased from fourteen to eighteen board members this year. Two of our newer ones are not in this picture. We're on our way to meeting our goal of twenty-four board members by the end of next school year. And the biggest cheerleader of them all is our leader Jimmy Conroy, who I will welcome back to the podium now. Thank you.
I have the last leg of our four-hour presentation, so, no, but we're just kidding. But thank you, Maureen. Of course, none of this would be possible without our partners and donors, Micron, Lockheed Martin, Swift, and the Apple Federal Credit Union Foundation, and our champion circle because they donated excess of $10,000 each. We are so incredibly fortunate to also have their active involvement on our board and in our schools. Thank you, Susanna Steen from Micron, Samantha Peterson from Lockheed Martin, and Sarah Emerson from Swift, who again is with us this evening. And thank you to our scholar circle donors and board members who represented them, myself with United Bank, Teresa Carlson with the William E. Carlson Fund, and thank you to our academic circle donors as well, who give the services of direct donation of up to $5,000 each. Our gold and silver, bronze, and friends supporters have doubled in numbers from last year, from eighteen to thirty-eight. We truly thank each and every one of these organizations and individuals for choosing to support our great schools. And finally, I know they couldn't be here today. I know they're watching. But we wanted to say thank you to, starting with Evolution Printing, who donated their design services for our annual report every year. They're a family-owned business. They are in Manassas. They started in the garage, and they are now up and running in Manassas and supporting everything they can through their amazing work. So thank you, Greg and Tiffany, and thank you, Heather, who puts all this together, and she's the magic maker, as they call her there. Thank you to our school board for your leadership, and to all our teachers, staff, community representatives, and businesses who are a massive part of our positive Manassas community. It is an honor to serve and support our students and education in this great city of Manassas. So thank you for your time, guys, and thank you for everything, but that's our presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Conroy. Thank you, Ms. Arvi. And also thank you, Ms. Emerson, for being here tonight. Please give our regards to all the board members at your next foundation meeting. And I want to thank all the donors, too. It's gonna be exciting to see the scholarships tomorrow night. And I do want to point out, we have a returning student, former student, Mr. Hamza Al-Jadi, who is a recipient of one of the Education Foundation scholarships, and thanks for coming back. Does anybody else want to say anything for the foundation? Thank you very much. Next up, we have a presentation on school bus transition from diesel to electric. Mr. Andy Hawkins, executive director of Finance and Operations, will provide an update on the possible transition from diesel to electric school buses. Mr. Hawkins?
Good evening, Chair Seberg, Superintendent Newman, School Board. Tonight, we're looking at, we've been looking for a cost-effective and systematic way to transition our school bus fleet from diesel to electric. And some of the reasons why are on the screen now. So one of the, each Manassas City diesel school bus generates about forty-four metric tons of greenhouse gases per year. So the entire fleet emits twenty-two hundred metric tons of greenhouse gases annually. An equivalent electric school bus will only produce about seven metric tons of greenhouse gases per year, or about three hundred and fifty metric tons for the whole fleet. So that was a little confusing to me because I thought EV buses had zero metric tons, right? That's what we've been told. Well, how we get to seven metric tons is because the electricity is generated somewhere, maybe through a coal-fired plant or some other way of generating electricity. So we are actually counting the metric tons of greenhouse gases from the time the electricity is generated until it goes through our bus. The buses don't generate or produce any greenhouse gases. It's just the way that the electricity is done. What we're proposing is a three, the first part of this contract that we'll be discussing will have twelve buses in the next three years. Those twelve buses would eliminate or the equivalent greenhouse gases for a hundred and twenty cars in the school division. So you'll read a lot about you'll see a lot in the newspaper. You'll read a lot about Dominion Power or maybe some state grants that are being used to help other school divisions, surrounding school divisions, transition to electric buses. So you may have a question, is, well, why aren't we doing that? The reason why I'm not proposing doing that is that it's a piecemeal approach, and piecemeal approach, and it still requires substantial capital spending by the school board. And would require us to have our buses hooked up to the power grid when the electric company needs it. So none of those things are true with this proposal that we're talking about tonight. We're going to have a systematic, sustained approach that's going to lower or eliminate our capital cost, and it'd be a long-term solution for this school division. So tonight with us, we have Ben Foley and Gerald Chessman. They're both with Highland Fleets. They're representatives. This firm recognizes the challenges that school division across the country face with this transition, such as cost, complexity, and risk. They have an all-inclusive approach, which will provide all of the buses, install all of the charging stations, pay for all of the electricity and maintenance on these vehicles, and train our drivers and fleet maintenance staff. The cost to MCPS is $38,000 per year, per bus. With this, MCPS has a systematic plan for transition that is affordable, avoids large capital costs, while continuing to pay an annual fee for the operation of the bus. So who is Highland Fleets? Highland Fleets, they are a nationwide reputable firm that has delivered successful transitions for all school divisions across the nation. The closest projects to us are currently Montgomery County, Maryland, who've entered into a contract for three hundred and twenty-six electric buses over the next four years, and Beverly, Massachusetts, which is roughly, I think it's thirty, thirty-five, thirty-six buses, I think, that they have in Massachusetts. I'm scheduled to visit Bethesda, Maryland on May the nineteenth to see in person and speak with the fleet manager and at the Montgomery County Fleet Manager to talk to them about their experience with Highland so far and the reliability of the buses that they have been using. I think Manassas City is a perfect place for these electric buses. Most school, the longest route we have is approximately twelve minutes long. Our school division is only ten miles in diameter. If we can't do it here, they won't be able to do it anywhere else. Other school divisions larger than us, our neighbors, Prince William, Fairfax, Loudoun, those other school divisions will struggle with electric school buses simply because of their routes are so long. And ours, we should be the perfect spot for electric school buses in our city. So once again, how does Highland model work? They design and implement the entire project. They create a subscription plan that allows for our bus charges and depot improvements. They procure all the school buses and manage all the construction of the depot where they put the charging station. They will train and use our current maintenance fleet and maintain our fleet. They will charge all the buses during off-peak hours, ensuring that we always have a full tank for every trip. And then they will provide a complete service plan, reimbursing the school division for all repair costs, including parts and labor. So there are grants and incentive programs available from the federal government that Highland will be applying for to offset some of these substantial costs. that Highland will be applying for to offset some of these substantial costs that they will incur. The first million dollars received through these grants will go to Highland, and any additional will be split on a 50/50 basis with Manassas City Public Schools. So, the picture on your screen is a picture of our depot, our current depot, and where the charging stations will be done. I don't know if Alba can make that a little bigger or not, but the charging stations will be right in the middle of those row of buses on both sides. This slide also documents the number of buses that we will be replacing over the next three years. This replacement of buses, generally speaking, follows our current replacement cycle that we have already established for our school buses. Assuming all goes well in this first three-year period of time, we will continue down this path to replace all of our diesel buses over the next 15 years. So, by 2038, roughly, all of our bus fleet will have transitioned away from diesel to So, that concludes our presentation for tonight. I have Mr. Foley and Mr. Chessman here, they will help me answer any questions that you might have.
Hello, everyone. It's a pleasure. I was a Assistant Superintendent for a major district called Willam Hills, famous district in Pittsburgh. I was also a Transportation Director, teacher, taught students with autism, and it was a pure pleasure tonight. I was Board Secretary and ran well over 200 board meetings, and a great career, and entered private business to take electric buses, really, nationwide. So, I want to commend you as a board, as a district, Dr. Millen, that just is beautiful to see the energy you have here with your administration. And I just want to make that comment and that introduction on who I am as well, that I have a pretty extensive experience with, obviously, school districts, but also electric bus deployments. So, if anyone introduced themselves to say hi, then we want to take as many questions that you may have. That's our goal of being here.
Thanks so much for having us. That was such a special meeting to be a part of, and, you know, just to be included in that crowd and to kind of see everybody and be able to commend people that I've never met, but just so, you know, in all of everything that's going on here, it's really special. My name's Ben Foley, I work for Highland Electric Fleets with Jerry here. We work closely with your colleagues, Mr. Hawkins and Mr. Yan Kobyak, on thinking through this plan. I'm a Virginia native, proud graduate of UBA, you know, I miss Virginia a lot.
Okies.
So, just really happy to be back, and so excited to do this final mistake. I come from solar energy development and wind energy development, and now I'm trying to, you know, take that experience and work on electric vehicles and make this a reality for school districts and operators like yourselves.
Thank you. You picked a good night to come, but all our meetings were this great, so. Questions from the board?
I always have questions, I'm sorry. And I don't, forgive me, I don't know the correct terminology, because the world of electric school buses is very new to all of us. My first question is, does Manassas City have, and like I said, I don't know the correct terminology, so forgive me, large enough, strong enough power grid to support electric school buses?
So, let me just say that Highland Fleets has met with the city already, and they know what requirements are going to be needed, and they have agreed to those. They've worked with the city people who run the utility department, and they've developed a plan, and they know exactly what's going to be needed to provide the adequate amount of electricity and charge to our school buses, assuming that we put in these charging stations.
So, by 2038, if all goes according to plan, how many school buses will we have that are electric school buses?
Well, all of the fleet now, which is currently 60 school buses.
Okay, so 60 school buses. So, we're starting with 12 over three years, is that it?
That's the proposal right now.
Okay, so 12 over three years. And do bus drivers need specific training with electric school buses as opposed to diesel school buses?
You know, driving an electric school bus will be different than driving a diesel or gas type of bus, so it will be some adjustment. There will be training that has to be done on these buses, not only for our bus drivers, which I think that'll be a fairly easy transition. Just to give you an example, when you're driving a gas-powered or a diesel-powered bus, you push on the gas pedal, and you will coast for a while, until you put the brake on, right? But when you're driving an electric bus, if you take your foot off the gas, you're going to slow down substantially faster, right? You're going, I mean, so, if you've ever driven an electric toy car or something like that, you know what the feeling might be. But, so, we will have some training with some of our bus drivers, to get accustomed to that. But one of our primary training is going to be with the shop staff, to be able to know how to work on the vehicles. These vehicles have substantial electric charge. We want them to be safe, we want them to make sure that no one gets hurt working on the school bus. We will have first responders that will be part of the training as well, to be able to know how to treat, what to do, if someone were to get hurt working on our school buses. So, these are, this is a whole new type of system, and it is extremely safe, but we need to make sure that everybody knows what to do, if an accident or an incident were to occur.
And so, the cost for the buses, and I guess the contract for the buses, that includes, like, upgrades to the shop for maintenance of the buses, and it includes the training for the shop mechanics and for the bus drivers? All of that's included?
Everything. All-inclusive. So, let's just give you an example of what we're already spending on school buses. So, right now, you know, if we talk about fuel and everything, maintenance and everything that goes into a bus, it's about $18,000, $18,500 per bus that we're spending today. It might be more than that now, since gas prices have, and diesel prices have skyrocketed over the last few months. But when we first started this discussion with Highland Fleets, it was roughly $18,500, right? So, we're paying $38,000 per bus. Out of that $38,000, though, we are not having to buy the electric bus, we're not having to put in that huge capital cost, which, you know, I think is, could be, electric buses could run approximately half a million dollars. We had, we visited Prince William County here recently, they have one or two buses there. They still had, they had a subsidized cost. So, in other words, Dominion Power, or the state or whoever gave them the grant, gave them some funds to help purchase the bus, but they still had to pay, they still had to pay $300,000 in capital cost. So, one of the big points in this is that we will no longer have substantial capital cost upfront that we have to pay for a school bus. A regular diesel school bus today costs roughly $110,000 apiece, so we will not have that capital cost for our current diesel buses, and we won't have the capital cost to provide the electric buses or the charging station setup and installation.
So, we're, with this contract, we'll be leasing buses as opposed to purchasing?
That's right. We own our buses now, but, you know, with that, we, at the end of their life cycle, which is normally 15, 16 years, the buses are, their diesel buses are not worth a lot of money, anyway. We sell them at surplus at the end of that life cycle. We may get $1,000, $3,000, something, whatever the auction brings. So, while we don't own the buses directly, we're going to be using, we're going to be exhausting the useful life of the electric buses, just like we do with the diesel buses now.
And this might be my last question. If this goes well, and it goes more smoothly than anticipated, can we speed up the full rollout, or do we need to stick to that guideline, that timeline of 2038 to be fully electrical?
We can, we could, I think we could speed it up with the amount of money that we're talking about doing. I don't know, we'd have to work with Highland Fleets. I'm assuming they've got plenty of buses, and they're excited, would want to join us in that effort. The reason that it's set up like it is now is because it's following our current replacement cycle of the buses that we have. And we were, we wanted, we were going to continue on the useful life of our current bus fleet, and when it was time to replace that bus, we would replace it with a diesel bus, we would come back with an electric bus. So, that's how we got to that schedule.
Okay. And then, I do have one last question. What about the other vehicles MCPS owns and operates? Are we thinking about moving those in the direction of electrical, or are we just focusing on the school buses right now?
No, we're just focusing on the school buses right now, but, you know, that's going to come. I mean, everything in this country is switching over to electric, and, you know, for every person in this country, they're phasing out fossil-fuel burning cars, and we'll be going to all be electric. It's not part of this project at this time, but I'm sure that we will be transitioning to that at some point.
Okay. Well, Andy, thank you. Thank you for that crash course in electric school buses. I think most of us had no idea before this evening, so thank you.
Any further questions from the board?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
I'm Chair. I feel like, from what I've read, there's, you are, Highland Electric Fleets are the leading provider in our country, in the United States. And right now, there's, you have deployed hundreds of electric buses throughout the entire country. Hundreds doesn't sound like a whole lot to me. So, I like that we're just phasing the proposals to phase things in, because we don't know how, I feel like I'm buying that first-year car coming right off of the factory line, that's the way I feel. So, we definitely do need to do a lot, a little bit more research. But the benefits are tremendous. I realize the benefits to our health, to cost, everything. I think everything I've read, the benefits are definitely there if this really does work well. Question about leasing, insurance, who covers, cars go with the driver, the owner of the car. How does it work if we're leasing buses?
We will continue to be providing insurance through our current, yes.
Liability as well?
Yes, the same as we always have. You know, our bus drivers will be driving the buses, you know, if they have an accident, we will be, we will be providing insurance for them in case there's an accident.
Okay, Lisa, Ms. Stevens answered one of the questions I had. And at this point, I feel like we need some more research before we can really move forward, and perhaps, perhaps some of us on the Finance Committee ought to chat about it as well.
I agree with you. We're, you know, we're going to go through this first three years, we're going to know at the end of the three-year period of time whether this is the right thing for us or not. One of the things that I didn't want to do was jump into this too quickly, right? Because, look, after three years, let's just assume that this doesn't work out, okay? The buses are not reliable, something happens, I don't know, maybe they don't work in cold weather, I don't know, right? We're just, anything could happen with these bus fleet, right? We're not going to be too deep into it that we can't get out of it at that point in time, right?
Exactly.
We'll be able to say, okay, this didn't work, we're going to go back, and we're going to start buying diesel buses again, or we're going to do something else, right? So, this first three-year period with 12 buses, which is going to be not a huge portion of our fleet, the percentage of our buses that will be electric will exceed the percentage of buses that are electric in our neighboring jurisdictions, but we won't be so deep into it that we can get out of it if we have to, if we need to, okay? I have all the faith in the world in Highland Fleets and the electric buses, and I feel confident at this point in time that it's going to work. But if it doesn't, we're not going to be so in bed with them that we can't get out.
And I appreciate that cautious approach with only hundreds of buses deployed in the entire US. That's all I've got, thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else? Mrs. Spalding, do you have a question?
I just wanted to say welcome. We're excited to work with you.
And for Ms. Williams as well, I agree with you, because I remember when, I'm sure Dr. Millen, when we had cocaine or new widget, remember iPhones, we just had iPads in the district in 2009, 2009. So, the great thing with Highland is that ability to really have all of our expertise and solution and support, where you're not just getting a grant for maybe one bus or two buses, and then you have a troubleshooting issue where you have support. We're going to provide so much support for your whole team, that's the really great programmatic shift that you're having. So, we're, thank you for having us.
Thank you. One last question. Do we have a proposed implementation date?
Right now, if you look on, I think it was one of the last slides, we're talking about next summer, okay? Now, we might be able to do a little better than that, I don't know, we're being conservative right now, but, you know, we still have to install the charging stations. We need to do all of the work that we need to do at the bus depot to get the electric electricity to that area, and we have to get the buses here. So, we're being conservative and saying that we'll have them, we'll be up and ready by not this coming school year, but the following one, but we might be able to beat that, I don't know, we'll see.
Very good. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Before we go on to our next agenda item, I did want to recognize our MEA leaders in the audience tonight. I know you don't like it, but it's important for people to know that you're here. Ms. Anna DiMarie and Mr. Brandon Fincham, thank you very much. Are you both vice presidents?
President.
Treasurer and vice president, thank you very much. Okay, next up is our action agenda. The School Board of the City of Manassas will revisit the action taken during the April 10th, 2018 School Board Meeting regarding school start and dismissal times. Who would like to start out with a motion?
All right. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that the School Board of the City of Manassas keep the existing bell schedule as the standing bell schedule.
Second?
I have a motion by Vice Chair Stevens, seconded by Mrs. Williams, at the School Board of the City of Manassas, keep the existing bell schedule as the standing bell schedule. Is there any discussion?
I think so.
Let's have some discussion.
Let's have some discussion.
Mrs. Stevens?
So, I think just about everybody knows what's going on with this. It was, and this comes before most of us on the board, that one of the issues we had was we didn't have enough school buses, ironically, as the conversation has taken place tonight already, and we needed to add an additional busing tier, so that gave us one, two, three, four, five, five different start times for school. And I know we've been discussing this as a board off and on, and all of us have been scratching our heads over how to make this work, and Andy Hawkins, Andy Hawkins has done a great job of talking to us and showing us different possible plans, but there was nothing that really worked out that would be feasible for the entire school division. So, you know, I think this has been a very difficult decision for all of us, because there's no way we can satisfy everyone. Someone at some point is going to be left with a bell schedule that they're not happy with right now. We do have our plan for Dean, I believe Dean should be built, is going to be, 2026?
Starting.
Starting 2026.
July 1st, 2025.
Oh, construction's starting July 1st, 2025. What happens with Dean could very well result in things like possibly redistricting, changing start times, changing bus schedules. So, that's something that we're keeping in the back of our heads as we talk about this and as we think about this, that although we're voting on keeping the same bell schedule, there is the potential that down the line, it will change. So, that's what I just wanted to put out there, kind of as food for thought for everyone.
Who else? Anyone?
Ms. Stevens said it perfectly well.
All right. So, I just want to reiterate that it's meant to be a standing bell schedule until the School Board reconsideres bell schedules such as for redistricting, or strategic planning, or something like that that comes up. It is a 30-minute difference between the different school bell schedules. We had asked for, if there was any data to help us make this determination, is it smarter to have one school go later because of the geographic location, but it doesn't matter, it doesn't make a difference. And I kind of go back to four years ago when this was brought up, because some people were, said they were told, they were told that they would be switched, the times would be switched. So, we want to make it clear with this motion that we don't plan to revisit this unless there's some redistricting.
there's some redistricting or strategic planning regarding the school bell schedule.
I'm going to chime in real quick because we are, we have a strategic plan consultant who's looking at how our school division runs. And one of the things they may look at is what our bell schedules are and is outside sources. They may, being objective and being outsiders, have additional plans for us that end up working better for everyone. And I believe we should have the preliminary information. Dr. Newman, is it in October?
The GM?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins, is GMT? MGT. MGT, yes.
Yes. So MGT will have some preliminary information, some preliminary data for us in October. They've been working with our school division since?
Last year.
Last year. So they should have some information for us in October and that could very well change things up a little bit.
Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, I have, oh, let's see, I'll call for a vote. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries seven zero. Going to get a motion for our closed session this evening.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion that the School Board of the City of Manassas enter a closed session.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Stevens, seconded by Mrs. Brooks. At the School Board of the City of Manassas, enter a closed session pursuant to exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section two point two dash three seven one one, Part A, Paragraph one of the Code of Virginia nineteen fifty, as amended for the following purposes.
Okay. We're going to back up a minute and go to School Board members' comments. Ms. Tenoli.
Good evening to the, good evening to the School Board and everyone who is joining us tonight. I firstly wanted to highlight the spotlights that were presented tonight, especially the art pieces that were shown. They all had such creative titles and were so amazing to look at. And it's always so amazing to see the talents of our students. I wanted to thank the board and giving me and Vania all these lovely gifts and wanted to thank Ms. Williams for her kind comments because they truly mean so much to us. And I also wanted to thank the board for allowing me to serve the board for two years. I feel like we are really just this small school board family that has gone through so many obstacles these past two years. I mean, it's remarkable that we went from a complete virtual setting to an in-person one and we did it so efficiently and so amazingly. I am more than thankful for this opportunity and I'm so glad I was able to give insight to the board about our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. DeBippi.
Good evening, everyone who has joined us this evening. I would first like to say congratulations to all those who have recognized, both students and staff members, who continue to make Manassas City Schools a great school system. I would also like to thank the School Board for recognizing Ms. Tenoli and I because I don't think either of us were really expecting it this night. So thank you for recognizing us. And I've had a great experience this year being one of the School Board representatives. I would also like to wish Ms. Tenoli good luck as she enters this new chapter of her life since she will be graduating soon. And lastly, I would just like to say a huge thank you to not only the School Board, but the students, staff, parents, and anyone else who helped make the school year what it was after transitioning from online to virtual, or from virtual to in-person. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeBippi. Mrs. Brooks.
I do want to say thank you to Ms. Tenoli and Mr. DeBippi for your service to our board over the past year and two years and wish you both very well. And I also want to say thank you, I'm not sorry, thank you. I want to say congratulations to all of our winners tonight and all of our staff and teachers that have just provided so much for our schools and our, and our students. Your service is very much appreciated and, you know, we have just a few weeks left, so congratulations to everyone for a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Brooks. Mr. Ickball, comments this evening?
Yep. Good evening, everyone, and hope everyone's having a great week. Since our last meeting, I had the pleasure of attending several school events, including the GT Symposium, the OHS Choir Spring Show, Senior Night at Osborne, and the final lacrosse game of the season against OP. I also felt very honored to meet with the MEA along with Mrs. Spall in which we were given the opportunity to introduce ourselves and have a very productive conversation. I'm continually impressed by our students whose hard work was on display in each of these events. I'd like to congratulate all of our students who have continued to work hard during the final stretch of the school year and the teachers who continually support them. And I just want to conclude by letting everyone know there's a Mets Chorus Concert tomorrow at seven P.M. and OHS Rock Fest is also at seven P.M. on Friday. So please come out and show your support if you can. And thank you and have a great night, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Ickball. Mrs. Spall.
I don't have any comments. I think everyone has covered pretty much all the topics very well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Williams.
Thank you, Mrs. Chair. First, I know I've already made a comment earlier during the presentation of our appreciation of your service for the past year and two years. But I want to truly express how well you presented yourselves throughout the entire time, your professionalism. I think you're ready for the real world and I appreciate everything you've done. To Highland Electric Fleets, I want to thank you very much for your presentation. I think this is just a huge transition. I think it's exciting. I will probably have lots of questions and if Mr. Hawkins can't answer them for me, I'm sure you will. And of course, congratulations to all the award winners today. We've had so many at the SBA Northeastern Regional Art Contest. We were fortunate enough to see the winners ahead of tonight. And it's really exciting to see Osborne High School win so many awards or places, place, I don't know, places, they placed, I don't know what the right terminology is, throughout the entire region. So that was exciting. And I just want to remind all of our students that the end of the year is approaching. Keep the focus, work hard, and let's knock the last few weeks out of the park. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Mr. Hollingsworth.
Thank you. I would just like to echo my colleagues' sentiments congratulating all the spotlight winners, all the teachers and all their hard work. I'd like to say thank you to Mr. DeBippi and both Ms. Tenoli for your service. It's been an honor working with you. I also want to say congratulations to Osborne for a successful prom this past weekend, as well as a big thank you to Ms. Adele Johnson for the after-prom and her team and a great job that they put on keeping our kids safe on a rainy night. So with that, I'd just like to say thank you and I yield my time.
Thank you, Mr. Hollingsworth. Vice Chair Stevens.
Thank you. I wanted to talk a minute about our artists and our very creative students. We had three students place third. And you might say to yourself, well, that's not first place. But here's the thing, we're a school division of less than ten thousand students. We, our students, were competing against much, much larger school divisions and we were the only school division that had students who won at each level, elementary, intermediate, and high school. That's huge. A week or two before the VSBA Art Contest Art Show, Manassas City Public Schools put on an art show with art from every grade level from every school. We saw everything those kids had on display. And what made me step back was not just the talent of our students, but the talent of our teachers. The talent of our teachers who were able to see the potential in these kids of ours, who were able to nurture that potential, help it grow and let it shine. That shine gave us three, top three winners at all three levels. So it's everyone who's involved in the school. It's not just our kiddos, but it's those teachers, those mentors, those people behind them who are so important. And that was great to see. Another thing about the talent of our students, the chorus concert at Osborne High School, it was Friday and Saturday night. We enjoyed it so much Friday night that I took my husband out Saturday night to see it again. It was the cheapest date ever, five dollars apiece. So, I mean, anybody in Manassas City can go do it and those kids were amazing. Center stage blew us all the way. It was like going to a musical. I was floored. I was impressed. So was my husband. We loved it. It was great. And then to our years of service, I did the math, to our two employees who've been with Manassas City Public Schools for forty-five years, they've been here since Manassas City Public Schools became a school division in nineteen seventy-seven. And so there's maybe that chance that they taught Tim Di Maria. And that they were able to stay with the school division for forty-four more years is really testimony. So that's, I hope Tim's watching. So that's a pretty amazing thing. And to Ms. Tenoli and Mr. DeBippi, Ms. Tenoli, we are so proud of you that you are representing us at Georgetown University. You are going places. You represent us well. We could not be more proud of you. And Mr. DeBippi, you are equally amazing. The insight you two have had as we've navigated a pandemic, virtual learning, concurrent learning, and all of the nonsense that goes along with us has been invaluable to all of us here on the board and the decisions we make. I can't tell you how much we appreciate you two so much. You are such guiding lights and shining stars for our school division as well. So thank you very much. And I don't know if I said it or not, but there are thirteen days of school left. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Stevens. And I'll just finish up with congratulations to all the people that were honored here tonight, students and staff alike, and to our student representatives. I really enjoy this time of year. There's lots of music concerts, award ceremonies, and lots of celebrations to be had. Our students, I've spoken with several, and they're already making plans for next year. And that's really exciting to hear, too. We have many senior events coming up and of course, graduation on Thursday, May twenty-sixth at Eagle Bank Arena. And I want to echo the compliments that Mr. Hollingsworth had for prom and after-prom. And I want to thank all the teachers and volunteers and staff members that volunteered their time to make that a successful event. It was enjoyed very much by the students that participated and it was a great time. I'm sure they'll remember it for many years. Thank you very much. That wraps up School Board members' comments. Now, may I have a motion to go into closed session?
Chair, oops. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that the School Board of the City of Manassas enter a closed session pursuant to exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section two dot two dash three seven one one, Part A, Paragraph one of the Code of Virginia nineteen fifty, as amended for the following purposes. Two dot two dash three seven one one, Part A, Paragraph two, Discussion of Candidates for the School Board Student Representatives for the twenty twenty-two school year. STUE twenty-one twenty-two oh two, STUE twenty-one twenty-two oh three, STUE twenty-one twenty-two oh four, and STU twenty-one twenty-two oh five.
I second.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Stevens, seconded by Mrs. Brooks. At the School Board of the City of Manassas, enter a closed session pursuant to exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section two point two dash three seven one one, Part A, Paragraph one of the Code of Virginia nineteen fifty, as amended for the following purposes. Two point two dash three seven one one, Part A, Paragraph two, Discussion of Candidates for the School Board Student Representatives for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. STUE twenty-one twenty-two oh two, oh three, oh four, and oh five. Is there any discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. We will go into closed session. Come back shortly.